Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selecting meeting for Monday, February 28, 2022. The time is now 6:30 PM. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, public announcements. Alex Hager, did you have any?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just have one. It's kind of a sport announcement. Support the mighty Green Wave. Time to rally up all the Green Wave bleacher creatures out here in Abington. Our phenomenal high school sport teams are in the tournaments and finals in boys' basketball and this hockey season. In basketball news, athletic director Pete Serino announced on Saturday that our boys' Green Wave basketball has qualified the ninth seed in the MIAA Division III state tournament against To Be Determined with a home advantage on March 4 at 6:30 PM. Also, our Green Wave hockey team qualified for the MIAA Division IV tournament. Our hockey team earned the 29 overall seed and will be facing off Sandwich in the first round. The matchup between the Abington Green Wave and Sandwich Blue Knights will be held on March 5 at 7:00 PM at the Gallo Arena in Buzzards Bay. Be sure to come out and support our Green Wave. In addition, congratulations to our Green Wave girls' basketball, track, and wrestling teams on incredible winter seasons, including beating records. Push yourself again and again. Don't give an inch until the finer buzzer sounds. Larry Bird. Keep up the great work and go Green Wave. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Alex, was that you?
Yes, I do. Sports related too, Alex. The Hug Foundation will once again play the Bruins alumni to raise money for the Hug Foundation. It's April 9 at 1 o'clock at Rockland Ice Rink. We haven't been able to do fundraisers, as everyone knows, the last couple of years. And the Hug Foundation started the Little Free Pantries during the pandemic and they're still going. And we have a family that we're going to be helping whose mother and father are both having some serious mental and physical issues right now, so part of the funds from this game will go to them. So tickets for adults are $15 and kids $5. It's again Rockland Ice Rink, 1 o'clock, April 9. You can reach out to me or Rockland Rink for tickets and also find us on Facebook and there's a link for Eventbrite tickets there. Thank you.
Tim?
Just a reminder that coming up on March 20 is the Abington St. Patrick's Day Parade starting at 1 o'clock. Parade will start in Abington Center, better known as St. Patrick's Square. The committee is anticipating 50 groups marching that include 14 marching bands. The high school marching bands will include Abington, Whitman Hansen, Pembroke, and Silver Lake. And the committee has invited the staff from the Abington Senior Center to join as grand marshals. So that's at 1 o'clock Saturday, March 20. There's still time if you want to participate. You have till March 9 to ask to participate or make a donation. Contact Jack Bailey for a chairman at 71-878-7785.
Thank you. I don't have any, I'll echo what Alex Hager said because selfishly my son is on the hockey team, so I hope to see everyone Saturday, March 5 at 7:00 PM at the Gallo. Public comments, does anyone have any public comments? Step up, say your name and address.
Abington is putting eight very important parcels into conservation, and I hope the town can create a community forest, hiking trails, preserving and protecting areas that in turn protect us. Green Communities Connections is an event that's happening, and we hope to share information on what Abington is doing with neighboring towns and what they're doing to help preserve and protect land. In sharing information, we help each other. I'm looking forward to working with Abington and the town manager to preserve and protect the environment, the health and happiness of our community. Thanks for doing the work you're doing on the parcels and hoping to put them into conservation.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as I know, I think a few of us have talked to Scott about, you know, looking at a conservation agent, if we could get something part-time or anything right now as the budget progresses. I know he said he was taking some look at that, but among other things that we need, you know. So any other public comments from the audience? Seeing none, there's no public appointments, no old business. First action item will be vote to approve the minutes of February 14, 2022.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. So next, as you'll see, some things on the agenda tonight. We're going to have Wayne Smith from the review of the zoning bylaw warrant article. We have Community Preservation Committee budget. Chief Nuttall's in with the budget update and the fire station building committee. Just as, you know, we're getting through the budget process, it's not an in-depth review like FinCon would do, but we do like to have the department heads in. I would have to imagine that the department heads like coming in here as well and, you know, being able to give an update to us if you have any questions and the residents to be able to get some information. It's an opportunity for the public to get an update. So without further ado on that, I will call Wayne Smith up to give us the first update on the zoning bylaw warrant articles.
Thank you. I'm sort of a little bit not at ease this evening speaking on these articles because we haven't had the hearing. And I would rather not express my opinions as chairman of the board because we need input from our board members. But if you have any particular questions, I probably can answer them for you. I'll just go through them quickly for you and maybe after each one, you can ask me any questions if you have them. Article 11 is to see if the town will vote to amend 17524 by replacing registered marijuana dispensaries with medical marijuana treatment center and by replacing the acronym RMD and to MMPTC. And that's strictly a bookkeeping thing, more or less the proper name that it wants to be used. That's all that is about.
So that's just a language, no policy change or anything?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Article 14, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Abington zoning map by adding a marijuana overlay district called Marijuana Production and Cultivation Overlay District over the multiple use planned development district bound by Chestnut Street and Hancock Street as shown on the amended zoning map or take any other action relative thereto. As you all know, we have a regular overlay district for retail cultivation and so forth in Abington now. That remains the same. We've had requests to have a cultivation, and this is cultivation only. It's no retail sales whatsoever. So they cultivate it and there's quite a bit of things in the regulations and everything else, but that's what it's for. And as it's in the article, it's on Chestnut and Hancock Street.
So that extends, what we have now is on Route 18 and 58, that section of the town, they can currently do it?
They can color indeed do that, and they can grow there too, as well as retail there.
Right. So that just adds that area to production, not?
Production only, no retail sales. And there are a whole list of regulations that go along with it.
It's only a specific area that you'd be adding, it's not the entire town, correct?
No, no, it's just that one area, yes.
Okay, which would be bound by Chestnut Street and Hancock Street?
Yes.
Okay. Board of, any questions on that?
Article 15, to see if the town will vote to amend 17566D by providing that the expansion of commercial properties by adding new land will constitute an additional required compliance with 17566. I think that's got to do with, and I really should have my book with me, but when you have some commercial land in one section and it goes into another section, you can use part of that land in that section.
Okay.
But that's part of the regs. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to add a separate marijuana, that's to do with the article we talked about earlier. And that really explains what the district is, all about it, and that goes on, quite frankly, forever.
So that goes hand in hand with Article 14?
That relates to that. It gives you the purpose, the establishment, the area, the definitions. There's some things already in it, for instance, delivery license, and we're not sure that needs to be in there, but that'll be part of the discussion that we have at our planning board meeting next week.
So that would, yeah, to see if the town will vote to add a separate marijuana overlay district for production and cultivation, okay.
It sort of spells out everything that's in the other article. Wayne, when will you, Monday night you'll be doing a hearing on this? Yeah, it's probably, I think it's the first Monday night.
So it'll be the 7th?
That's correct, the 7th, at 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
Right here. And it just goes on to explain, it's a whole page or two.
Do we have any information on how many, like, is this restricted to a certain number of?
Oh, with the Commonwealth, there is not. It's not like the retail.
Only for retail?
For cultivation, there are no limits on.
Can only be 20, and we can't regulate, for whatever reason, we can't regulate how many we can have.
Interesting, okay.
Follow that.
Okay.
That goes on about five pages, believe it or not. And Article 17, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by adding a new section titled Battery Energy Storage. And that's something that isn't in too many towns yet. I think one of the reasons that we need it in here is because if you don't have something in there, people are going to come in and want to do something. It really relates to battery storage with anything, you know. And it goes, it breaks down into how much of a piece of property it can be on. It has to be less than 10% in a building, for instance. You have to have exits and entrances to it. It's something that, is the chief here? Yes. I'm sure you're working on it also. It's just, we just don't know what we're getting into, but that's what it's all about. And it relates a lot to Massachusetts law and, you know, what you have for shrubbery around the building and everything else. There again, that goes on for about five or six pages.
That was Article 16, yeah.
That was 16, yes.
Then Articles 18 is to do with multiple family housing in the town of Abington. And I think it's interesting to note, if someone asked you what, how many multifamily homes that we have, excuse me, in Abington compared to residential, the answer is 42, 42%.
Wow.
So what we're trying to do, that's great for the voice, what we're trying to do is have a special permit for greater than 12 and under 12 by, actually, no.
Wayne, you need a copy?
Yes, thank you, Wayne. Thank you. One of the areas that we're worried about particularly is Route 18.
Okay.
We've already had some issues come in there and people just want to jam housing in, and it's difficult. And it'd be, I mean, we all know what's happened on Over in Waymouth. I mean, they've tried to get a moratorium on multifamily homes. We know what's going on in Abington and with 40Bs particularly. And as you all know, there's also that the Commonwealth wants to have a district around the T stations. And believe it or not, it's also been brought up as how does that affect the T station in Waymouth that basically comes into, if you do that same radius, it comes into Abington.
Okay.
So it's just a lot of multifamily homes.
So that would be, that would be to vote to amend if adding 12 units or less is N prohibited and greater than 12 units is, would be a special permit?
They'd have to go before the zoning board of the tables.
Okay. That's Article 17.
You have it as 17, I have it as 18.
Yeah, I think we're one off.
I might do wrong, yeah.
You have it as 18?
I have it, oh, no, never mind, I'm sorry.
It's 17, Alex, yeah. I think we're one off, but.
There must be one I'm missing somewhere. And then 19, we have it listed as 19. It's natural tree coverage and everything. And I can assure you, we have to do a lot of work on that article.
Yeah.
And that's been brought to us because people don't want to see trees cut down. And when someone builds a house on a lot, they remove all the trees.
Yeah.
But it's, in a lot of respects, people would say, we'll leave all the trees up. But quite frankly, many people will be spending a lot of money tearing, cutting them down when they change the grades and the, you know, put trenches in or anything else. So it's something that needs a lot of attention. I don't know, I mean, I would like to see more trees around town. And maybe one of the answers is to, instead of having two street trees out in front of your house, sometimes three, maybe to require that they have two or three more trees in their yard. But, I mean, you could have a big pine tree next to your house and it looks great and everything else, but when it comes down, it doesn't look so good. And if, when you build something and you take other trees down, those trees won't necessarily stand up, so.
Well, I think maybe, and Kevin and I actually talked about this recently, if a developer is coming in and clearcutting an area for trees, maybe there should be a percentage of the amount of trees that he's taking down that should be replanted.
Yeah, I would say so.
Yeah.
The problem is, is the trees that are growing wild aren't the trees that you necessarily have in your yard.
Right.
And that's exactly what you're saying. I don't know how, I don't know what the answer is.
Well, I mean, like, conservation, if you're filling in wetlands, you have to replicate wetlands.
Right.
So, I mean, this could be something very similar to that. If you're taking down, you know, so many trees, you have to plant so many trees.
And our stormwater protection thing has a lot to do with that, too. So that was sort of tying into this, yes.
Yeah, it is tough when you see like a development and they just clearcut the whole thing and it's, you know, why can't they, put so much thought into planning it, why can't they plan around keeping some stuff, you know?
Right.
But I do understand the different grades and whatnot, but.
We all remember what somebody did up there behind the new development off Randolph Street, what he did. He went in and clearcut everything. And it was just flooding all the way down into Brazzy Street and Dorsey Street.
It's very, it's very, when you write regulations, there are exceptions to it, and there are other times when they should be followed to the law, strictly, you know.
Mr. Chairman, this is probably a different discussion to have, but additional multiple, multi-unit dwellings, will that in effect, affect the water situation? Do we, I mean, like, do we?
By what, shutting it down?
Do we have the water capacity to make the special permit?
I think everything right now is.
That would be, they still have to go to the water department. I mean, the zoning board or planning board can approve something, but if the water commissioners don't allow them water, then they can't build.
It's just one step of the many, right?
Yeah.
So they still would have to get the project approved, but.
The water is not an issue for the planning board or conservation or zoning board.
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking big picture.
But I think that's, that's what effectively taken out anything 12 units or less, right? Building anything small in 12 units? Is that how that reads or am I reading that wrong?
Well, actually, whenever we approve anything, it's with the understanding that they can get surge or they, or the water health, it's a septic system.
Still pending.
Same thing with the water. They're all, they all.
Pending approval.
For many years, in fact, I remember quite a while, for both reasons, we've had a moratorium on building in this town because the water department says there's no water. I mean, they could probably build, put in wells, but then the well has to be so far away from the septic system and there's some other things.
No, just my concern is if we made this an option, we'd just have buildings standing there with no water and just losing.
They, I have yet to see a builder build when he hasn't got a source of water.
They wouldn't be able to build.
No, because they couldn't get a permit.
They would need a permit to build, so you're not going to get a building to build.
The building department wouldn't give them a building permit.
Okay. You good with that, Alex?
Yep, no, it's good. I'm just asking for myself and people at home, so.
Yeah, so in order to get a building permit, you need to have your zoning, conservation, planning, if it's more than two units, sign off. Water and sewer have to sign off. Then you turn it into the building department. If you don't have those signatures, you can't turn it into the building department.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Did anyone have any questions, any other questions on there? Anyone in the audience have any questions on those?
I think Bruce Hughes, 69 Randolph Street, Vice Chair of the Planning Board. I think you can look at.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're just not going to be able to hear you at home.
Okay. Hi, Bruce Hughes, 69 Randolph Street, Vice Chair of the Planning Board. I was a professional planner for 35 years before I retired. I think if you went, as far as the trees planting, trees being left on a lot, I think if you went on mass planners' listserv and consulted with the planning community, they could give you advice as to what percentage of the trees need to be left, you know, on a development and things like that. Because, I mean, nobody likes the clearcutting. I live right up the street from 121 Randolph Street, and you saw what they did with that site.
Right.
Yeah.
So, and the people who live on Wyman Road, there's hardly a tree barrier there now between their houses and that. But that developer was within his rights to do what he did.
Right.
But, I mean, ideally, we, you know, conceivably, we could look at mass planners' listserv and what they say as far as trees, you know, trees being required on lot coverage and things like that. Be happy to look that up, you know, and consult with the Chair of the Planning Board on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's definitely a good thought. It's just, you know, trying to, like the percentage you're replacing too. Okay, no other questions on those articles?
No.
Okay, move on. Community Preservation Committee budget.
Hi again, Bruce Hughes, 69 Randolph Street. I'm Chair of the Community Preservation Act Committee in addition to being Vice Chair of the Planning Board. We've got a couple of things we're going to talk about tonight. One is the special town meeting warrant articles. And there's two. And it's Article 3, Community Preservation Act. Do you need me to read this whole thing? No, okay.
No.
All right. Historical resources, restoration of the exceda, etc. That's the thing as you drive into the road going its way coming up to Town Hall. It's that monument that's on the rotary there. And looking for $40,000 to restore that. As I understand it, they've already acquired a lot of funding to do this, on this. But we have it in the special town meeting warrant article for $40,000 to do that. And that's been approved by the CPA Committee.
So what exactly are you going to do with that?
It's going to be completely redone. You know, I guess it was pretty trashed when they built a new high school and stuff like that. So all the stones have to be reset and everything else. My wife's involved with the Daughters of the American Revolution. Apparently, they have some interest in that because Kathy and I have been out to check it out. But it'll look a lot nicer than it is now. And something like that costs a lot of money because you have to have, you know, masons come in, you know, exterior building. You have to have builders come in, masons do that, and they get it off. We paid $5,000 to have a new front walk put on our house. And that's a little less extensive than doing something like this. So that's what that's for. Article 4 in the special is, these are to correct the fiscal year FY '22 budget. And there's certain amounts and stuff like that. But basically, that's the correct mistakes that were made last year's budgeting, the things like that. And, you know, when it comes to time to be, to explain this on town meeting floor, be happy to do that. That's basically just a correction of errors on those, okay?
Okay.
And then on the regular town meeting, on Article 9, this is the Community Preservation Act budget. See if the town of Abington will vote to adopt a report of the CPA Committee fiscal year 2023 Community Preservation Act budget and to appropriate or preserve the later appropriation monies for the CPA fund, estimated annual revenues, and appropriate administration expenses. And the projects we have, Unit Preservation Act expense, which is 5%, and that amount is $30,876. That comes from the fund balance. Now CPA does open space and recreation, historical resources, and housing. So the projects we have for open space and recreation is Island Grove Cleanup, and that's to remove invasive plant species. And that's $66,000. And basically, what we'll do is have someone come in and try to get all those yucky plants and stuff like that out of the pond. And I think that would be a chemical treatment to do that, a safe chemical treatment to do that. Beaverbrook Playground Phase 3 Funds, $75,000. Island Grove Snack Shack, which would be completely rebuilt, brand new, $60,000. I guess the Town Highway Department's going to help with that and stuff like that, the town department's helping with that. Softball Field Updates, $40,000. Woodsdale Field Updates, $40,000. And under Historical Resources, Memorial Bridge, estimated cost, cost assessor, and grant writer. This is basically to get an estimate how much it will cost to fix that bridge. And that's going to be $60,000. But that's not fixing the bridge right now. It's just to get an idea how much it will cost to fix it. Preservation of Town Records, that's $46,646,000. Mount Vernon Cemetery Record Preservation, now that's $38,300. Now, we know that Mount Vernon is a private corporation, but their records are held at the Dyer Library and they're accessible to the public. And these are, you know, greatly, very old records and people interested in, you know, ancestor research and stuff like that. So, and the records are deteriorating very badly. So, you know, the committee discussed this, and we decided that it fell within the purview of our authority to, you know, put this forward. Again, that was $38,300. And then finally, under Housing, we've voted to appropriate $100,000 for the Affordable Housing Trust. Remember, last year we went through that, it was created, and things like that. A year before it was created. And this isn't the entire, we aren't the entire source of funding for that. But we are, you know, we do have a certain amount of money that's set aside every year for housing. And this is an appropriate amount of money the board decided. So, and final thing is reserves, the fund balance is $70,697.
So how much, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
How much is in the housing reserve fund balance?
I honestly don't know. I could get back to you on that if, you know, Ken Coyle is the Chair of that committee, I believe, or Ron Howe, PM Howe.
Because we've had it now for. Because we've had it now for.
Couple of years.
Seven or eight years.
Yeah, right.
So we should be building some good money up on that.
Yeah, well, you know, and I was on that committee until I got committed out. I think we've all done that. But I know that they're building, you know, funding up, and I know that they've got several projects in mind to support housing. I think it was an excellent idea to get that myself.
Yeah, I do too. One other question I had, Beaver Brook Playground is Phase Three, $75,000. What was Phase One and Two?
I'll turn to Kelly.
And what is Phase Three?
So, Phases One through Three, it's all going to be done in one phase, it's just different phases of funding. So, the first year was 150,000, second year was 125, and this is supplementary 75,000. The main reason for that is because after we've done some research and looked at the different playgrounds, you can't really get a good quality playground for how much money.
So this will be enough to do it all?
It should be enough to at least get the main part of it done, and then, you know, in future years, we might follow up.
Add on it.
Yeah, some minor things, like smaller playhouses or some landscaping, things like that, but this will be the bulk of the structures.
And all the funds they're raising?
Yes.
Will go to UPPEP or?
So, on top of that.
Is that on top of the 450?
So that will be on top of that. It's just been a rough couple of years for fundraising, of course. You can't do any major fundraising. Yeah, so this, the fundraising will continue, and it will be on top of the CPA funds, but a lot of that will go towards those smaller items, like I said, the landscaping, the fencing, anything like that.
People have to understand that when people come to us for.
Thank you, Kelly.
Funds, they're also doing a lot of fundraising and stuff like that. It's not the total source, just like the housing trust, it's not the total source of funding for that. They just come to us, it's, you know, for a little bit of help.
But it's great that we can give them $400,000.
Island Grove Pond Cleanup, that was a study that was done a few years ago, right? Wasn't there a study done on the pond?
There was a study done for it, but I don't think anything was actually done to it.
Okay.
And, you know, if you've been there, I love that place, I proposed to my wife on Memorial Bridge. There's not a plaque there, there should be, no. If I paid for it.
Next year's funding. Next year's funding.
That would be historical, wouldn't it?
Well, it's lasted 28 years, Kathy. I remember how nervous I was, I was afraid that I would drop the ring into the pond, but that's another story. But, you know, we know that these funds that we give these folks, the town gives these folks, is just an extension of what they do for fundraising and things like that.
I guess what the, so the pond cleanup removes the invasive plant species, but will this be like a continuous thing? Will they have to do this yearly, or?
Well, I think there's phases to it, but it won't be a yearly thing, but, you know, you're able to go in there and do it and clean it up pretty extensively. It's been done before, and I think if you've been around town for a long time, we remember when the pond was drained and it was all dredged, remember that? And we were without the pond for several years while they were doing that.
And then when Mark Chorokas was with Park and Rec, he had the weeds cleaned up, and I think that was the last time it was done.
But, you know, I think realistically, as far as the town goes, that's just something that's going to have to be done on an ongoing basis over the years.
Yeah.
Because, you know, putting on my planner hat, there's a lot of sources of nutrients going into that pond from, you know, leachate off of houses and stuff like that, lawns and fertilizer. It's leached into that pond, off of lawns and things like that, and they provide fertilizer for those weeds that grow in that pond. So this is just an issue that somebody from CPA or other committees will be up here long after, I'm sure. Hopefully not for a while.
The $40,000 for the Woodstale Field, will that make that a playable baseball field after?
Yes.
That's, so that will cover everything? Take care of the drainage issue that's been 30 years?
Yeah, it's been like a bargain.
Is the Green Street Field on your radar? Yeah. Maybe we can go for that, maybe next year.
It's good to see the Memorial Bridge too.
Issue over there.
I think we had some repairs done to Memorial Bridge this year on the railings and whatnot.
Yeah, right.
But it's good to see that will get, you know, studied on and.
If you go down there now, I mean, if you look at that bridge, it's scary. You see the metal railing starting to separate from the deck and stuff like that.
Although, when you're in the water, looking from the water up, it's pretty, looks pretty solid.
Yeah.
You swim in there often?
No, no. I was in a kayak.
That's what I'm told, that the piers are pretty solid.
Yeah, yeah.
But, I mean, it's pretty old. You know, we did go through the trouble of restoring the arch and stuff like that. So it'd be good to get that deck, so more people can propose to their girlfriends on that bridge for many years to come.
Yeah, we read that a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
Eye opening.
Yeah.
So.
Gentlemen, do you have anything else for us?
No.
Any questions?
This is for me.
Awesome.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And thank you to everyone that voted for CPA.
Definitely. All right, so next up is Chief Nuttall with the FY2023 budget update and the Fire Station Building Committee update as well.
Thank you. And the town manager asked me to give a brief update on a couple of things, so I'm going to break this down into four sections. An update on the FY23 request, an update on the current FY22 budget, just a basic operational update as to how the fire department's doing, and then finally, on the Fire Station Building Committee update. I also have firefighter Derek Kamati, who's the Chairman of the Fire Station Building Committee, in case I have to defer to him for everything, but I should be able to cover it otherwise. So beginning with the FY23 budget request, I requested a level service budget, and it's important that you understand that this does not include any collective bargaining for the firefighters' union. The town manager's not there yet, I'm not sure where that process is, but so the figures I have now are not inclusive of any agreements that they may or may not come up with. So the dollar figure I am requesting for FY23 is $3,903,988. To give you a comparison, over the current FY22 budget that we have, that was $3,863,666. So that is a $40,000 and 322% dollar increase for 1% increase at this point. So I think we've held this really well.
Yeah.
I have no capital requests coming up on FY23. With the exception of a long-term capital plan of, an ambulance of $370,000, that's what they're going for. I'm hearing from my colleagues, that's not a fancy ambulance, that the price of fire and I believe police apparatus has gone to the roof. And everything's about 18 months out on that.
What do we have for ambulance now, and how old are they?
We have three ambulances. We have, our newest is A2, which is, I believe, two years old. We're still paying for that, and I'm trying to stagger this, I'm not requesting anything until that is paid off. I'll get into the funding, there's a possible funding mechanism on this, which I'll talk briefly. Our second ambulance is A4, which is a 2015, I believe it is, 2014, 2015. And beyond that is A3, our spare, which we do put into service quite a bit. That's a 2008, I believe. That needs to be replaced. There is a possibility that we're exploring with the town manager, the town accountant, the town treasurer, of using remaining CARES Act funds to try to pay for an ambulance. They were very specific what you can and cannot use those funds for, that's really loosened up. We really have to get authorization from the Plymouth County Commissioners on that, the way Plymouth County is spending those funds, and we are working to see that. This isn't anything that I need right away. However, it's an 18-month process because.
So we can get the okay from Plymouth County, then?
At that point, I think we'd go for it. I'd recommend going for it.
I think they would.
So we are working on that. If we can save the Abington taxpayers on that, we're in great shape. Beyond that, there's no other apparatus request or anything. So any questions on the FY23 request? Okay. FY22, I just want to give you just a very brief, this has been a very complex year so far. We had a lot of COVID absences. Now, you have to understand, we're still under the COVID protocols, but we do not have any COVID funds to offset that. So all of this has been coming out of my salary account. And at one point, I think at this point, about 75% of the entire department has had this since January, February, the end of December. It's taken a hit. We got through it, we're managing it, we have maintained all the shifts throughout this, but it's been expensive. And, you know, the previous years, we had COVID money to do this, we don't have that anymore, so, but we still have to follow those rules. So that's been a hit to the budget, as well as I had one member retire, so we're hiring a new member, and I'll get into this more in the operational, but we'll be hiring a new member in a couple of weeks. I have a total of three firefighters attending the Mass Fire Academy this year. And we have to backfill those positions every time they're out. That's been an expensive year. And I also have one member in the Massachusetts National Guard that has been intermittent deployments. These have really been just a couple of week deployments so far, we've been fortunate, but we also maintain that position when he is out. So I'm just letting you know that this may be one of the years that I may need an end of year transfer, and I believe I can do it with, from my own expense budget. I'm trying to maintain the expenses there just in case, because I really don't want to go beyond the overall confines of my budget if I can help it. But this has been a difficult year. Any questions on that? I'm going to expand on this a little bit with my next section, which is your operational update from pretty much where we've been. We've had a very busy season. Obviously, we had the extremely unfortunate fatal fire a couple of weeks ago on Lynwood Street. That was a devastating loss, obviously, for the family, for the community. That was difficult for the fire department. Everybody maintained very professional discipline and composure dealing with that incident, but ultimately went up to alarms on that. We had a lot of help on that because we needed it. We had a fairly busy season so far since just this fall. We had a serious house fire on Christmas morning, we had a kind of a stubborn chimney fire Christmas Eve, just before that. We've been to Rockland a couple of times for multi-alarm fires this season. It's been a busy fire season, as well as our overall call volume has just really increased again. The temporary lull that we saw really during the middle of the whole COVID crisis, that's really ended, and people are out and about and they're not afraid to go to the hospital again. At one point, we kind of started pausing that, that's certainly over. We have been very busy. That affects the budget, again, going on beyond some of the other absences we have, and we do budget for that, you know, when we have multiple calls or fires, you know, a lot of that's, we have to bring in extra people to supplement the six firefighters we have on duty at all times. So we've taken a hit. This, again, is why I'm concerned about this year. There's really no rhyme or reason for it, it's just been a busy year.
Is the call volume increasing? Is that equal to previous, pre-COVID years, or?
Yeah.
It's about the same?
I think we're actually going to surpass that.
I was going to say, people more, it seemed like you're seeing more volume, like more people are out and doing stuff now.
Lot of accidents, I mean, you drive around Abington, you see the traffic. We keep building this town, so we just have more residences, we have a few, I don't want to say problem properties, challenging properties that we tend to get more fire alarms with is sometimes it's just a bug in the system.
How has it been so far with the new Route Eighteen with the wiring? Have you noticed an increase in accidents, or what's your take on that so far?
Very difficult getting in and out of our station. I don't want to jinx us, but I'm kind of surprised we haven't had a strike yet, a vehicle strike.
Okay.
They are flying up 18. We're trying to get out in our trucks, we have to maneuver into that traffic. And the lights are working, but in, I'll refer to one of my firefighters, I don't drive the trucks as much as they do. Not every vehicle sees those lights going to stop.
They're definitely going faster coming down.
They are flying on 18.
Yeah. Is there anything else we could, should be doing, or reaching out to the state for more signage, or painting on the ground, or, I mean, you see it in other towns, right? I mean, they should, could we paint something on Route 18 there, or?
Well, I think the overall project's still not done, and I'm not sure if that's what they're waiting for.
Okay.
I'm just, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm just seeing common sense. They're flying down 18. There's no question. And I'm seeing that, you know, I feel bad for the businesses around us, you know, we've got the big trucks, we got a light in front of our station. It's difficult getting into the station, you know, my car, I don't normally use the lights on, or any residents just coming in for any business at the fire station. It's tough getting over those two lanes of, cutting over those two lanes of traffic that are heading south. But then I see all the businesses around us, and I don't know how they do it.
Yeah.
It's kind of what we expected, but.
Yeah.
So continuing on, you know, again, this year, we had firefighter John Force retired after, I think, 34 years of service, frustrated town. That created a new position, which we will be, I'm waiting for the list to come out in two weeks, and I'll be acting on that. Again, we had two firefighters graduate the Mass Fire Academy in November. I have one firefighter that begins the Mass Fire Academy a week from today, on next Monday. The new firefighter that we hire in a couple of weeks, realistically, at the earliest, I'm probably looking at April before we could get somebody in, they also have to go to the Mass Fire Academy. That may not be this fiscal year, just the way this may time out. I'm guessing that's probably more for the summer. Good news is, we have a new forest fire truck coming. This was paid for out of a FEMA grant a couple of years ago, and again, because of the delay and everything, we're finally hoping to get it in April. I don't believe we're going to have it in time for the St. Patrick's Day parade, as much as I was really hoping for that. We may, but I don't believe it's going to happen. We're all, the entire department is going through emergency vehicle operator training now, we're doing it this week. That was part of the grant, we had to certify that we were doing that. So we're taking care of that this week. And that vehicle will certainly be a welcome addition. The forest fire that we have now, it was a great truck, but it's tired. It was a former Navy four-wheel-drive ambulance that was converted to a forest fire at least 15 years ago, and since then, we've replaced the pump on that, the entire package, a couple of times, so that, it's a tired truck. So we're looking forward to when that comes in. Once that vehicle comes in, we are in great shape apparatus-wise. We've done a lot of work with the entire fleet in this department to bring things up to speed, so. And the last thing I want to mention about just an operational update, something I filled this board in last time we met, as you know. Our fire prevention department has been extremely busy with just a lot of very large and complex projects and issues in town. One large one, which I'm not going to mention tonight, I can give a report, that is coming back up online. It's not 100%, but we are getting progress on that.
Okay.
To the extent that I have a level of comfort, actually, somewhat level of comfort. We've been working very hard with the building department downstairs and also a town council. In fact, I meant to find out from Scott, I don't know, I don't normally, the fire department doesn't normally spend a lot of money on town councils. We've really been able to avoid that for many years. Usually, it's a medical issue, a question on, an injury. We're spending it now on fire prevention issues, serious issues, really, it's to protect the town, not the fire department.
Definitely.
And we're seeing more of this, and we're seeing a lot of complex projects that are coming in, putting on very small lots. That's some of it, as well as we're just seeing a lot of projects that we had to do a lot of handholding with the owners that we really shouldn't have to do, the same with downstairs and the building department, but the alternative is, this town's going to be stuck with a building which may not be safe. So we've really gone above and beyond, and we're continuing to. That's taken a lot of time from the Fire Prevention Division. Thank God we had that day captain put on, because that's been a very busy portion of our department, and I don't see that decreasing anytime soon. If anything, it's going to continue to increase. I'm looking at some of these very large projects we have coming on in town, and that's a lot of work to go through all of the processes, just prior to when it's on paper. Once these finally start breaking ground, you get into the testing, the inspection, the fire alarm coordination, it's a lot of work. So we're doing it, but it's, it's a change in the department. That's pretty much where we are in the fire department, if there's any questions on that, or.
Does anyone have any questions?
No.
So the final part is the Fire Station Building update. And I want to preface this with, and I sincerely mean this, I'm a firm believer that everything happens for a reason. We started this process about, over three years ago, when I came to the board at the time, looking for funding just to do a feasibility study, showing some of the issues that we've time, looking for funding just to do a feasibility study, showing some of the issues that we've outgrown the fire stations, as well as they're just both tired buildings. We got that. We really did a good feasibility study. We were ready to present this to the town literally the same month COVID hit, a couple of years ago. Talk about timing. That delayed everything. We get it. You know, it is what it is. That delayed town meetings, or we kind of had an amended town meeting the first one. So, this, everything kind of got slowed down. The longer things go, the more expensive things become. We're at the point after the last town meeting that we were able to receive some funding to really begin honing in and doing some test drilling and all that. The number one location was going to be right up the street on Glennebitch Way. And again, that was based on, that was out of the feasibility study to dump onto Route 18 ultimately from that point. That is almost the geographic center of town. That provided us the best response time pretty much everywhere in town. Several things have happened since then, and really, I think the community really doesn't have the appetite for that location. And there's a number of reasons, and I actually understand it. Right up until we really weren't granted permission to access that land to begin the drilling. So, to be honest with you, I'd rather it happen now instead of we do all this, and then we try to present this to the town for approval and/or ultimately funding, and it gets voted down just because they don't like the location. I'd rather find that out now. So, right now, Glennebitch Way site is off. It's off the grid. We're moving away from the Glennebitch Way site. The second location we had was the North School from the feasibility study. We really ruled out the North School based on the size limitations of the lot. It looks big until you try to put a fire station there. And when you see what a modern fire station is with the required room, it shrunk down very rapidly. As well as all of the areas, the immediate areas around that traffic, the North School's a traffic island, around that traffic island, and even secondary attrituary from that with all those intersections, it really was going to be an issue, we feel. And so, we really have abandoned the North School site. So, since we did our feasibility study and all of these response time studies and like that, since that time over the last almost three years, the DPW has indicated that they also have needs. Director Stone, you know, he's been vocal since then saying, you know, their buildings are also very old. In fact, they're, one of their original buildings, I think, was in 1930s. It's one of the oldest buildings in town except for the Froyo. That really wasn't on our radar. We never really looked seriously at their site. You know, that was their site. That's the DPW. We didn't really, you know, consider that. It is really up the street from the North School if you consider it that way. But
Yeah.
So, in reexamining kind of where we're at, and now understanding that the DPW also has some needs, we were kind of open, you know, we had a meeting myself, the town manager, John Stone, and the police chief, because it's really, they're in a butter, a direct town of butter, to see, is there a possibility we could co-locate a fire station facility there with a new DPW building? And I think that there's definitely interest on that. And when we really started looking at this seriously, it's kind of coming together, the idea-wise. Very early stages, nothing's set in stone whatsoever, but there's an appetite for it. And I think it would actually be a lot cheaper for the Abington residents if we were to combine two large projects into one. Certainly, it's going to cost more than just the fire station, and adding a fire station would be more than theirs. But overall together, I think it would be cheaper because we could do a lot of shared spaces, especially shared administrative spaces. I'd still like to try to get the building department, if not the Board of Health on there as well. We are working daily, if literally not hourly, with the building department. If we could be in the same building, that would make things a lot easier and streamlined for us.
Definitely makes sense.
And it would also free up space in this building. That was one of our original ideas anyway. And again, what we've been through the last two years with the Board of Health, working extremely close with them, I think there could be room for that, too. There's a lot of ifs here, and I know that. So, where we stand right now is we're going to need another town meeting vote to change the language for what was already authorized for the fire department study to now include DPW under that umbrella. I'm not, and I don't believe the town manager, we're not looking for more money at this point. We're looking for language change because as it was voted at the last town meeting, it really was only for the fire department. It did not include any other departments. So, we're hoping to present an article, which I don't have in front of me, to read it to you because it hasn't been written yet, to include the DPW, you know, or other departments in the overall study. And at that point, we could do a real detailed feasibility study and a needs assessment for the DPW. We've got the fire department. You know, the building that we had designed on that, we can, we could flip it. We can almost take it apart room by room and reconfigure it. You know, that's kind of how that project was based on. And now, we need to do the same for the DPW, and if not for the departments downstairs, and see, can we fit all these until, you know, one, you know, it's probably going to be a couple of buildings. And then we have to see, can we fit it on the site? There's a lot of steps to go on this. So, granted, we're kind of behind the times on this with the fire station. However, it may work out long-term for the entire town if we're able to co-locate, you know, and combine a couple of major projects. It actually, I think, would be cheaper. So, Derek, did I miss anything on that? Feel free to, okay. At the same time, we're still going to put out a formal RFP, request for proposals, if there's any other land within, basically, it's a sweet spot, if you will. It's the corridor pretty much, originally, it was Route 18, basically from 139 to 123. We're widening that out now to kind of, we really can't include Hancock Street. That's really too far west. But really, it's still probably Route 18, and now we're including all the way over to Route 58, kind of in that same area. I don't think there's land, but you never know. I mean, if somebody has a large plot of land that really could work, we just want to give it one more shot just to kind of see, is there any land available that we may be able to do things? We're really, we're running on land in this town. That's another reason the DPW site is attractive. It's already fairly developed, meaning you don't have to clear cut any wild lands there. Obviously, we, at some point, if this were to become more serious, we would be looking at the neighbors to anybody that abuts there by all means. And I've already started talking to some of them. There's some concerns, you know, there's a few challenges here as well. It's, we think we could fit everything there, but until we really get into the studies, we don't know that. So, that's where we're at right now. And I'm not sure if you have any questions on that, or any concerns, or if you've heard this before.
Is the board of anything?
I don't.
I mean, I think it's a great idea to look at it. I mean, after the fire departments, I think the next oldest buildings in town would be the DPW. And looking at most of the buildings that have been replaced, the library, this town hall. So, you guys are kind of, it makes sense if it can be done. And rather than spending a big capital on a fire department and then having to turn around in a couple of years and have to do a DPW, that's a huge issue.
I'm also a taxpayer in town. I live in town as well, so I get that. You know, and the more we're looking at the site, the more attractive it's becoming because the DPW maintenance garage is right there. And, you know, they service our vehicles as well. It would be so much easier to just literally bring it feet over to where that building is instead of trying to coordinate, change an apparatus around.
Yeah.
The police station is right there. We respond there many times, just for whatever issue, you know, they may have issues with people under arrest, or just sometimes people just go to the police station and, you know, for, almost like a lighthouse, just for help.
Yeah.
And we'll go there. I mean, it really is an attractive site when we really start looking at all this. And to be honest with you, we didn't really consider it before. It really wasn't on the radar until we heard that the DPW had their needs, and we're homeless anyway. We're looking for a site.
I mean, moving forward, if it does progress that way through town meeting, adding on people from the DPW to the committee in that avenue, basically, to have another, some more input over there.
I don't think we're opposed, and I think that's fair. I think that's, you know, it shouldn't be, right now, obviously, it's fairly heavy firefighter weighted with some residents, too. But if we're going to start to get some other, you know, entities in here, they need representation. I think everybody understands that.
Who are you looking to get this warrant article on?
I'm sorry?
With the warrant article for the language change? Was this for next year's town meeting?
I'm hoping for this coming April. I think the town manager is as well.
I think there's a place older than that. Just the article itself has a better. Since we closed it? Since we closed the warrant?
Yeah, I think he had put that.
I'll let you deal with the mechanics of that. Really, it's a language change. It's just to try to open that up just a bit to see if we can get authorized to do that.
Okay, that makes sense.
All right, and that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the update. Very informative. Thank you. Okay, next up, Alex Hagerty. So, you had asked for FY 2023 budget to be put on the agenda. Do you want to open up about this and your thoughts?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for putting this on the agenda. Originally, I wanted to ask our town manager a couple of specific things about budgetary things. But I, I'll save that for another time when the town manager is here with us. But also, so at our previous Board of Selectmen meeting, I, you know, we had a very spirited conversation about procedures and what our role is as Board of Selectmen when going into a fiscal budget. And, Mr. Chairman, you did ask me if I had any ideas or any input moving forward. And so, I just, I wanted to follow up with that. So, last time we met, I spoke about looking at the bylaws and what specifically does the selectmen's role entail. And as I said at that time, I wasn't very sure. It wasn't very precise. After reviewing the town charter, I wanted to share this with the Board of Selectmen and the public. So, of Article 6 Finance and Fiscal Procedures, in Section 2, 6-2 Submission of Budget, the town manager shall submit to the Board of Selectmen 30 days prior to the date a budget is required to be submitted to the Finance Committee as specified by bylaw, a written proposed budget for town government for the ensuring fiscal year, including the budget proposed by the school committee. And then, in Section C of 6-2, within that time fixed by the bylaw, the town manager, with the advice and consent of the Board of Selectmen, shall submit to the Finance Committee a proposed balanced operating budget for the ensuring year with occupying budget message and support documents. So, just trying to get back to, and this is why I'm talking about it, is going into a fiscal budget.
Yep.
We have the procedure to advise and consent to the town manager before he or she presents to the Finance Committee. I'm just, so, looking at that, and then in Section 6-3, we have budget message, the budget message of the town manager shall explain the budget for all town agencies, both in fiscal terms and in terms of work programs, and include other material as the town manager deems desirable or the Board of Selectmen may reasonably require. So, what that all entails, so the reason why I'm bringing this forward, because it kind of circumfers my, the ideas that I wanted to bring forward. And really, well, it's not really even my ideas, but it's ensuring that we are following the finance and fiscal procedures as laid out in the town charter. Looking, and in, where's I have in my notes here? I mean, our town manager did provide to us, let me see here, on January 24th in 2022, the revenue budget forecast. And then going into December 13th, 2021, in the town manager's report, the town manager mentioned that the budget process has started. The first draft has been out. And just, so trying to get a full view here, as I said before last time, this is my first time as a selectman going into a budget year.
Yeah.
And, you know, just trying to get, understanding more and really see how the nuts and bolts work of our town and, you know, going into the, you know, we're going to be discussing the town budget at our upcoming town meeting. I want to, you know, I've been watching the Finance Committee meetings and listening to department heads come into the Finance Committee and presenting, you know, bullet by bullet, you know, what's in their proposed budget.
Yeah.
Now, circling all back, did we ever, did, so according to 6-2 Submission of the Budget, did we ever, did the town manager ever submit to the Board of Selectmen 30 days prior to the date a budget is required to be submitted to the Finance Committee?
What's the date it's required to be submitted to the Finance Committee?
I'm
I don't think we're there yet. I mean, I think we're finally getting into the process now. Like, when you talked about December, the budget process started in January 4th. I mean, I think you'll recall initially, the initial ask, I think there was a $2 million difference, and now we're down to $300,000. Yeah.
Talked about it back in December.
But that was
I think, I understand what you're saying with the charter that says that. But I think the problem is, there's no clear defined date when it has to go to FinCom.
But keeping in mind, too, the town manager could also submit a budget. I mean, you could have two budgets submitted, FinCom and the town manager on town, at town meeting floor theoretically. I mean, I mean, but you got to remember, right?
So, looking at past, so even looking into Finance Committee meetings in December, they were presented the town manager's draft budget.
But it was a draft then.
It was a draft, yes. But according to the town charter, we should have seen that as well.
I believe we did.
I'm looking at my notes, and I've kept all my records. I haven't seen one.
I mean, I thought he gave us a pretty good update at the time when it was starting, but I don't, I couldn't recall an exact thing, but
I don't know what the date was, but he did give us some sort of update at one point.
But I think
But as for an update, was it like a physical paper copy here? Or was it in the town manager's report that's saying, hey, this is what we've started?
I think it was town manager's report.
I think it was probably town manager's report.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, I don't think he
Because it was a $2 million difference at that point, and it is a
Correct. The trash.
And the problem is, this process moves relatively fast. So, I'm not sure the way the charter is written is really a feasible way to do it.
Yeah, it's almost put in
So, I guess it then, so I guess it then circles all back to my point that I made at our previous meeting and that I'm just talking about now, that, so this is my idea, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
That we are supposed to advise and consent the town manager when drafting his town budget to present to the Finance Committee for final approval. So, my concern is looking at how the Finance Committee has met with all the department heads already, and really, they're moving the process forward and really getting down to the nuts and bolts.
But it was
Have, is there, is there the ability for us to even give input at this point, advise and consent? Because I think, when I hear the advise and consent, is, we should, we should be conversing with the town manager, saying, you know, what are our priorities going into the fiscal budget? Like, what do we see is most important going on with the town?
Maybe going forward in the next budget.
We do goals and objectives every year.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, and that's, I mean
That's what I was going to say during the
We know. I mean, you can always ask the question.
Maybe we want to have a budget meeting set aside.
Yeah, I mean, keep in mind, I think it's a tough one because, I mean, it's so early. I mean, we're going to be talking about a budget that is so far off that
Yeah, we're going to be talking about the next budget, probably in September.
The whole, the whole point is, I mean, I think, I think we put our trust in Scott that he's following the goals and objectives, and he's taken the input from us throughout the year and, you know, running the town day to day that, but again, he's presenting to us his budget. I mean, it's, they're just getting to a point where they're able to, you know, present a pretty balanced budget rather than a, you know, a budget that's $2 million off that we're going to be having a million questions about, no pun intended, when, you know, he can refine. I think the Finance Committee, I mean, that's their job is to meet with department heads and go line by line because they need to break that down. That's not our job.
Yeah, I think our advice for the town manager should be more of an overall, an overall outlook, you know, maybe talk here and there about positions added, but really just an overall forecast on the town's finances and not, certainly not a line by line thing.
No.
We shouldn't be micromanager Scott or the finance.
I mean, I think
Well, it's not up to us. Scott runs the day to day.
I think it's a good barometer to see that, we're talking December, there was a $2 million gap, and now these, what, $200,000 or $300,000? I mean, that's a, I mean, the town manager in the FinCom is doing a tremendous job to be able to bridge that gap. I think, I think he's doing a good job there. And I think it's definitely good to add input, like you said, Alex, and maybe we, maybe we add another meeting or cater a meeting, but
Well, no, because if I may continue, Section 6-4 of the town charter, the bud- Well, no, because if I may continue, Section six-four of the town charter, the budget, the proposed operating budget shall provide a complete financial plan for all town funds and activities for the ensuring fiscal year, except as, except as may be otherwise be required by general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, by this charter and bylaw, it shall be in the form which the town deems desirable or the Board of Selectmen may require. So I think, I mean, and I could be wrong, again, like I said, this is, this is my first time as a selectman going into a fiscal budget year. With all respect, I, I don't necessarily remember us talking about what priorities we want to put forward for the town.
Well, I actually think that we did not do our, our goals and objectives this past year because of COVID and everything. I think that was something that we typically do during the summer months, and I don't think we did that this year.
I mean, on the, what about on the, I mean, still in the Town Manager evaluations, that we had, we had goals and objectives on there that we put in there?
It's part of the evaluation process.
It's, it's part of his evaluation, that's all there. I mean, that's, he has to, you know, I mean, he's, he's reviewing all those.
It was done, it was done prior to the election, though, so you.
So maybe Alex wasn't part of it yet, but.
Yeah, so we didn't do it this past summer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, that might be a thing where you, the piece you're missing, but I mean, you'll be coming up on that this year, is the Town Manager evaluation, where you're going to put in there.
That's where goals and objectives are done.
Okay, well, I'm just.
Again, you just haven't been through it yet, because you haven't been through the full year yet, so now you're finally seeing these things.
But the wording in the charter may be something that the Charter Review Committee wants to look at.
When is it?
I'm not sure it's feasible.
By this point in the, by this point in the budget process, it's really down to Scott, the Finance Committee, and the Abbott residents.
Okay, so I.
I think I said at the end of the day, the residents are voting on this, not us.
It circles all back to, that I, I hope moving forward, we can, we can have that opportunity to advise and consent with our Town Manager.
Scott's always been open to talk to us.
Oh, I, I understand that, but, but I'm talking about.
So we're on the same page.
I'm, I'm talking about an open meeting, where we, we're advising and consenting what, what we see as, as the priorities for the town of Abington.
Maybe going forward, we have a budget meeting, like I said.
I mean, we can do a budget meeting, I just.
I mean, I know, I mean, like I said before, the Finance Committee has been meeting every week. I know they met every week in January.
Maybe we have the Finance Committee giving us updates as well as Scott.
But here's the thing, even with that.
What, what's the thing?
Technically, according to the town charter, it's not the duty of the Finance Committee to come up and tell us what they're doing. That's why we have a strong Town Manager. That's, that's what he's for, and it goes actually even to.
So.
My next point, Section six-five, Action on the Budget, the Finance Committee shall, upon receipt of the budget from the Town Manager, consider in public meetings detailed expenditures for each town department, agencies, and may require the Town Manager or any other town agency to furnish it, with such additional information as is deemed necessary to assist the committee in its review and consideration of the proposed budget. When we, we're, you know, we're talking about the duties of the Finance Committee, they're talking about the duties of the Board of Selectmen, it's not our duty to sit here and interview line by line what the, what the financials are for each department.
And that's all, that's all we're doing.
That's why we have the Finance Committee.
And we don't do that, though.
But it was proposed, it was proposed at our last, at our last meeting.
What?
That, that we do that.
What was proposed?
That was proposed, that we have department heads come to us.
Not, not to go line by line, that was.
No, we do line by line.
What John did tonight, what, what.
Oh, no, no.
Chief Del Pappa came in last meeting, and John.
This is what we're looking for, what we had tonight.
Because we don't need the line by line, because that's still with the FinCom, that's their responsibility.
Okay, then it circles back to that, I mean, Chief Nott is absolutely fantastic, and we have fantastic department heads.
Yeah.
But that should have been done in the 30 days prior to giving the bud, the draft budget to the Finance Committee.
And that's my point. I think that's a flaw in the charter that can't be met.
I, I don't, I don't think so, because I, I personally don't.
So what is the date when it has to go to the FinCom?
You, yeah, what is it saying there?
I, I don't know that. Here's the thing, I'm the new Board of Selectmen, I'm, I'm, I'm bringing this up.
So town meeting is April, so FinCom has to meet with all the department heads, so 30 days prior would probably put you in around November?
Again, we have, I mean, that's.
Before it goes to FinCom?
And what exactly?
It's not feasible.
I guess my question to, to you, Alex.
But it's done, yeah, these, these are all done in public meetings, at the FinCom meetings, before the draft budget.
I understand, but we have.
But you're getting hung up on the wording in the charter.
But we have procedures by the charter to follow.
And I'm, and I'm saying, it could be a flaw in the charter.
And hopefully, and just for next year, I hope we do, I, I hope.
Alex, do you mind if I see that real quick? I just can't forget better if I can read it real, real quick, and just make sure I'm not missing your point.
My point is now is that, I know it's in the charter, but if you think about it realistically, when would be the date that we'd have to give it to FinCom? And it would probably be around November, where we can't get an accurate number for the budget. So I think that might be something in the bylaws of the charter that needs to be looked at, that could be a flaw in there when we went to the strong Town Manager.
So, so, yeah, so six-five, I guess, was the question, so that to a public meeting, the department heads given the details at a public meeting, that's to the Finance Committee, not to us.
Correct.
Right, and that's doing it. So I was just making sure that we're, we're actually on the same.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're not saying the Board of Selectmen's doing anything, but that is, no.
Oh, yeah, no, so that's why I'm asking, do, is it necessary for us to then take that, that extra step to, you know, have DPW come in front of us?
No, if we, if, like, what we've did with the Chief Del Pappa and Chief Nuttall, I don't think, that's not necessary, that we kind of do that as a.
I think it's a great thing to do.
As a service to the town, to the people, just.
Well, and that's.
And the department heads like that, they like to come in here and be able to talk in front of us and give an update of the department and hear questions.
And I was the one that, I did request to the.
I think it's a great thing to have.
That the planning board come in tonight and Community Preservation, just, because we weren't even going to have a meeting, because Scott was off, but I wanted to kind of use this as an opportunity to get ready for the time to meet.
That's why I put the budget on here, I requested the budget, too.
But I think it's important to have them in, I mean, it's, it's not that, they're not going out of their way, I mean, they're happy to come in and do it, because they want to talk about their budget, they want to talk about things.
And the less questions we have at town meeting, the less confusion town meeting.
I mean, people need to know about it, why would we, why would, just like, just like you want, like, the 30 days prior, I mean, I think we should have them in here prior to town meetings, so we're doing the same thing.
Correct.
I just, we have goals and objectives, and I, and I think also, Alex, for you, I mean, putting stuff on the agenda, talking to the Town Manager throughout the year, I mean, if you have something, I mean, you're.
Oh, I, I talked to Scott, I spoke to a Town Manager on a daily basis.
So, but that's what I'm saying, all these things you're doing, I mean, that's, that's Scott's job, is to, I mean, he reports to us, so.
That's his job, he reports to us.
So he's, he's taking these things down and, and taking action on them, if he's not, then we have a discussion on it. But there's goals and objectives in his evaluation that we do, and it's, you know, important for every single one of us, we have a voice on this board, and Scott reports to us, so, you know, if you have something that you want to look at, I mean, I don't think we narrow it down to just, you know, looking at 30 days prior to the budget, I think we talk about it year round, we talk about things getting added in, what could we do about this, let's have a healthy discussion on it.
Yeah.
But it's important that you bring your voice up and talk about that.
I just think it could get a little dicey if, if, if we are now advising and consenting to Scott while he's in the middle of deliberations with the Finance Committee.
Well, I think, I mean.
I think that's why it was laid out that way in the town charter, that we have the 30 days prior to presenting to the Finance Committee, so we can have the opportunity to work with our Town Manager, or if we had specific questions, you know, saying, you know, DPW, what do you, what is your priority, what do you need most coming up in this next year?
But I mean, the DPW, I mean.
That's what the Finniest Committee is.
The, the DPW, they have a five-year capital.
Well, maybe I should, I should have rephrased that.
But Alex.
I should have rephrased that, like, bigger picture items, I don't, I didn't mean to talk about the nitty gritty and, you know.
But the DPW, I mean, they have a five-year capital plan, like, a lot of these departments have these capital plans that they submit to Scott, you know what I mean? I think we've seen, I was a while back for the DPW capital plan, was it prior to being on the board, that we got a copy of that, but this, every department has one, I mean, Scott's following that, I mean, we're looking on here, there's, there's a plan for police cruises and.
You did mention the capital improvement.
Yeah.
I don't know if this was something we followed or not, but six-six, the Town Manager shall submit a capital improvement program to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee at least six months before the start of the fiscal year. I don't know if that was, if that was followed either. I'm, I'm, I'm.
You're going back to December now.
I'm not saying here to be confrontational or anything like that, I'm saying to, moving forward, we need to make sure that we're following our procedures.
I, I think we are, I agree, I think you might be getting hung up on some language things, but, like, six months prior to the fiscal year budget, I mean, you're talking December.
Yeah.
You're talking, I mean, Scott is, I think every Town Manager Board, he kind of seemed to talk about something going on, or, I mean, I think that was discussed.
Yeah, no, discussing is great, but it's like, I think, I think what the town charter is trying to refer to is like having a hard copy of, you know, what is our capital improvement program?
I'll agree with you on that.
Yeah.
I think Scott was trying to move that over to the Capital Improvement Committee that we both sat on.
Yeah.
And, and I don't think it was ever, I mean, after last year's, since last year's town meeting, I should say, I don't think he's formally brought it to the Board of Selectmen, so that's.
Yeah, no, I definitely, I definitely agree with you, I think it'd be good for an overview to get from all these different departments, because everyone has one, so.
I always come up with great ideas, too, after the fact.
Yeah.
As you learn, I know it's your first year.
Well, ideas, anyway.
It's your, it's your first year, but as, as we go forward now into your second year, that's going to be something that we learn on, and, and you come up to us six months prior and say, hey, this week we should ask for a capital improvement plan. And it'll just make us all more efficient, this is a very young board.
Well, yeah, no, and this is why, this is why I'm bringing this up. I'm not, I'm not trying to be confrontational or anything, I'm just saying, like, the better we do, the better the town does.
Yep.
You know, and I.
Yeah, don't wait, don't wait till open meeting when the cameras are on, feel free to tell us before, while we're doing the agenda.
Don't worry, I already emailed Kevin, and I spoke to Scott, so.
All year long, I mean, we're, we're here all year long, let's, I mean, I also agree, like, let's do this throughout the year.
You definitely agree with most of your points, so.
Well, and I, I think the other whole thing is, this past year, or past year and a half, has been a little different than the books should be anyway, you know? I mean, things haven't been able.
We can't be using that as a shoes going forward.
No, no, going forward, we can't.
The schools are returning to normalcy to some degree, so I think, I think we shall as well.
And I think we will, too, you know? I mean, and in Scott's defense, if he did miss something, you know, he got here in the middle of a pandemic.
Yeah.
And, you know, there was a lot of things that didn't happen the way they should have over the last couple of years, but I'm, I'm sure going forward, you know, I agree, we need, we need more discussion on this, and I, like I said, I think maybe in, I know we touched on it probably November or December, but maybe we have a budget meeting, you know? Go over the details.
Watching, watching the Finance Committee, I have seen that they have requested that we have a dual meeting together or something like that. I think, I don't think that should be a regular thing, but I think going into the, after the challenging years that we've had, I think it would be definitely beneficial for us. I know, especially the Finance Committee has been requesting it, and we're dealing with a $63 million budget, so we want to make sure everything's all good.
Yeah, I mean, and they do, the FinCom does a tremendous job doing that, I mean, day in and day out.
Oh, no, the, the.
I have no, I have, you know, I have all the faith in the world in our FinCom, you know, and the Town Manager for that matter.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's not, at the end of the day, the town residents vote at town meeting on the budget, it's not the five of us up here that decide it.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we can talk to Scott and.
And I think.
And FinCom doesn't, again, with us, I mean, we could have meetings with FinCom, it just, that's their job, I'm not going to interfere with their role, I mean, they do a tremendous job as well.
But I think town meeting, for the last several years, for many years, the budget is probably the quickest thing that's approved, so I think that shows that the town has the faith in the Town Manager, the Selectmen and the FinCom, because there's very little discussion usually on the budget.
And Alex, again, to repeat, the evaluations, the annual performance evaluation, if you will, of the Town Manager, you will be able to do that, you know, all five of us do one on Scott independently of each other, so you'll be able to put your own stuff in there and goals and objectives and discuss other things, so.
And then he will, he will give us a complete.
If you have any issues or recommendations.
Matter of fact, Tim and I had talked about it when we got his goals and objectives, how detailed they were compared to our former Town Manager.
Yes.
Remember that conversation?
Yeah.
But, I mean, maybe it's something, maybe it's something we do, some sort of, we add it on the agenda, like, I don't know, like, quarterly through the year. I'd hate to see it just, you know, slammed on once in November, and they were talking, and people hearing, like, we're asking for this, this, and this, and now there's like, you know, $7 million gap, and people are just panicking, where it's like, let's talk about it throughout the year.
Yeah, no, and what I'm, what I, you know, I was, I'm trying to get, speak about, when I'm talking about priorities, is, you know, looking at our big, big-ticket items that we, we have to discuss, that we have to work with Scott on, and, and present with, you know, the Finance Committee what, what we want to do for the future. And look, I mean, there's a lot of challenging things that are facing Abington, and honestly, I mean, there's no easy solution for some of these, these big things, you know, the trash or retirement, it's, there's, there's no easy answer, but I think if we set our priorities, saying, you know, this is what we need to focus on, big-ticket items, and so to then present to the Finance, so then Scott present to the Finance Committee that these are the, these are the avenues that we want to go down for the, for the town, and it, like, yeah.
But keep, keep in mind, I mean, like, Scott's doing these things, like, Scott, you know, the last few weeks, he's been sitting in on health insurance, up, you know, talks and negotiations, so, I mean, that's going to be coming up, and he's going to give us an update at a future meeting, so he's, he's looking at that and trying to save.
He's been meeting with people about the liability.
He, I mean, he's talking, I mean, he's, he has some.
So that's going to adjust the budget.
He has some real good news that he's going to be sharing, hopefully, and that's going to be good for the town, so keep in mind, he is doing all these things that, I just, I would hate to see it just, like I said, in one, one month or whatnot, but I do agree with you.
Yeah, no, just setting our priorities, if, if anything, you hear anything from me tonight, you're setting the priorities for the town.
And remember, big-ticket items regardless of us five on this board, it's still, it's a town meeting decision, still the town residents at the end of the day, you know?
Well, and that's.
So, I mean, I really want to make sure, I mean, the residents are voting on a lot of these things, so.
Yeah, well, and see, that's where I think it then goes back to, you know, assisting and consenting with the Town Manager, it's like, this is, this is what we're hearing from the residents, that they want us to focus on.
Advise, not assist.
Advise, excuse me, advise.
Big difference.
Yes, we're advising, yeah.
Advise, excuse me.
You don't want me running the town budget. My wife doesn't even let me handle the checkbook at home.
But.
It's your micro cheese. Yeah, she's watching, love you, honey.
Well, I think there's definitely something there.
But she cooks great.
She is, she's a great cook, absolutely.
More to discuss, I think, but I think we're in a.
All right, so, I mean.
Good understanding of it.
Just bringing, just so, moving forward, just so we're clear, and for people at home clear, so, moving forward, we're going to more strictly follow the Finance and Fiscal Procedures of our town charter, as it's laid out according to the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would say, I think we discuss them more and come up with a better game plan, you know? I think we need to, rather than strictly following, I think we have, we can, we can do more, I think that's a disservice of just strictly following that and doing one meeting 30 days prior in November. I think the residents deserve a lot more than that, but I agree with you. Again, Charter Review Committee, so have you attended the Charter Review, or have you, brought this up to the Charter Review Committee yet?
No, I have not, Mr. Chairman.
I think that would be a good avenue if you, to maybe, you know, talk about it, you know, discuss with the Charter Review if there's some language in there, have them you know, discuss with the charter review if there's some language in there. Have them look at it. Maybe there's something that, you know, the charter review committee who was appointed can look at it and, and give some guidance as well, you know? I mean, they're residents in the town. Let's have them look at it and, and guide as well.
Well, I, I, I just, I don't, I'm not saying to cut anything. I'm saying that.
No, 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 no.
Just, just follow it.
Reword-ing the language a little bit, because, you know, 30 days prior, we're talking in November, you know, maybe it's something that we do more times a year. Maybe it's a joint meeting. Maybe it's different things, but.
No, because I, personally, I don't, I think it's absolutely doable. I mean, it's, it's written in our town charter for a reason.
Yeah, and like, that's why we have a review committee as well. I agree. But I definitely think, you know, we can, and we can at least, if that's what it is, I mean, we can at least add that one meeting 30 days prior and then go from there. But again, you'll see, coming up to see it with the town manager evaluation, you'll, you'll see the whole process where Scott will talk to you and tell you his goals, what his goals and objectives are. You will put down what your goals and objectives are. You will have a lengthy discussion with Scott independently of any of us.
Well, yeah, and here's the thing, we missed, we missed out on that opportunity to have that meeting.
No.
And then that's.
I, no, I think you did because you weren't on the board yet, is what I'm saying.
It was pre-election.
It was prior to you being elected to the board.
We did, we did a review and.
You will.
I think we did them in April last year.
You will, this, this.
Prior to the election.
I mean, I mean, going into.
We did them late, though, but.
I mean, going into the budget season. So like, when the town manager and the departments are.
No, I understand, I understand that.
Building their budgets in the, the winter months.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, I'm not looking at 30 days prior to going to the budget season. I'm looking at overall, Alex. I think you got a picture of this, is when you sit down with the town manager, you have your own goals and objectives that you're listening to the residents on and that you want to see moving forward. Scott's also going to be talking, Scott's just not looking at 30 days in advance. Scott's looking at the next fiscal year's budget. He's going to talk to you about what he sees for the next fiscal year, what he wants to bring. And then, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's not just 30 days prior. When you do his evaluation and he sits down with you, that's when he's going to talk to you about what he sees for the future year. It just, you haven't been through that yet, is what I'm saying.
Okay. I, I don't see any, I don't see any issue doing, doing the same thing 30 days prior to, you know, submitting the budget to the finance committee.
Absolutely. I'm just saying that when you go through the evaluation and you, you hear his things, those are the things that he's also doing that you're going to hear 30 days prior to going to the finance committee. You get what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, because I think.
This isn't talking with you whenever.
Yeah, I mean.
Oh, I know that, but I'm, I'm just saying, I think before the, the budget, you know, the draft budget was submitted to the finance committee, I think at least we should have saw it.
Okay. Well, like I said, we can work further, further on it, you know, in accordance with the charter. And I think we expand a little bit further on it from there.
But, but to your question, is my, my explanation to you clear about what my ideas for presenting to you, as, as you asked me at a previous meeting?
Yeah, I do. Like I said, I just.
You're setting priorities.
I just think we go, we can take it a step further. We can incorporate more things as not just, I agree with you following the charter, but I think we need to incorporate more things into it, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Part, part of it being that you just haven't gone through that process yet. So you'll, you'll, once you get through that, you'll understand and see another avenue of it, which will help guide further.
All right. And, and setting priorities?
Yes. Yep.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. If there's nothing further on that, the liaison update, I know you put this on, Alex, but I'll start real quick. We'll just go down through it. Again, I have spoken with the chair of the Park and Rec Commission that I'm assigned to. I receive all of their agendas. I review their agendas. I have not been asked to attend their meeting for any guidance or anything like that yet. If asked, I will be there. If asked by this board, I will, I will go and attend the meeting as well. I think they're doing a great job. And like I said, I'm here for any guidance moving forward. Tim, did you want to go on yours or?
Yeah, kind of the same thing, Kevin. I'm on for the liaison for four, school committee, CPA, fire station, building committee, charter review. They all send me their, they all either send me their agendas or I find them online, but none of them have had any selectman business app needed to attend, and they haven't requested. And I don't believe you've requested me to attend any of them. So there's nothing really I can update right now.
So I guess I'll go next. I'm on the planning board, Plymouth County Advisory Board, open space and surplus school building committee. So planning board, I notified them that I am their liaison if they need me. I did attend one meeting just to observe. I am receiving their agendas, but I don't, I don't think it's up to me to go there and try and to influence anything. If they have any questions, they know how to reach out to me. And Liz is sending me the agendas. Plymouth County Advisory Board, we meet two to three times a year. We have a meeting coming up, I think, March 31st. So I will be there. And I'm actually not sure what the, we haven't seen an agenda for that one yet, so I'm not sure why they called for that meeting. I'm assuming it's an update for the CARES Act and APPA, so I'll give you an update at that point. And to that, and Scott is in constant contact with the Plymouth County anyway, so he's getting updates on that. Open space, I did attend two meetings at their request. We were able to, they were, they voted to accept land and everyone knows about that. But they did ask me at the one, one meeting was in person, one was in Zoom. The in-person meeting, since they all knew volunteers, which is great, but they actually asked the procedure to how to open a meeting, how to make motions and, and close a meeting. So I was glad to be able to help them with that. But again, it's, it's their vote. We appoint them just like any other board. It's their decision and I'm not there to influence anything. And I will only go with their asked, if they ask me for advice again. School building committee, I have not been to one of their meetings. I have actually not received an agenda for that. So that's my report.
All right. I have the Beaverbrook Playground Committee. I haven't been to any of their recent meetings, but I did get some information that they're, they're still taking donations for, on the, you can go to the Facebook page, the rebuild Beaverbrook Playground, and actually, you know, oh, yeah, put bricks to put down and stuff like that, be a part of Abington history of that Beaverbrook Playground. Let's see. And then I'm also the alternate for the Old Colony Planning Council. I did get a town report, our annual, annual report, CPED, Green Communities. The town of Abington, we were awarded $200,000. And then as for the REPA grant, we were rewarded $3,000 for that. So that's great. As for the sewer and water commissions, I've been in contact with the superintendent of water, superintendent of water, Abington Rockland Joint Water Works. His update, the levels as of right now, so the PFAS levels, they're pretty good with the snowy and rain winter that we've been steadily gaining. We are waiting on word from DEP on whether we will be receiving funding for PFAS removal projects. There's supposed to be a hearing on that March 22nd. And then also the funding, the funding for the PFAS removal projects will potentially would be the state revolving fund, which could be 0% financing if our project gets approved. So that's the water and sewer. And then, let's see, I am also the liaison for Conservation Commission. The conservation recently had a Zoom meeting, a joint Zoom meeting with the open space committee. And there, they did, they did accept the eight parcels of land that we voted to send to conservation and open space. They are currently open, developing open space rec plan with the open space committee. And they are also looking into possible grants in the future for trails and funding parks. So that's very exciting. And lastly, the zoning board of appeals, having regular hearings, really